SC-497, Nat. 11, Massachusetts. Seeing none of you close to hearing none close to us. We now move to the next bill, the goal quarter of these bills, our wishes by agenda. You will all have a long day ahead of you.
She's good with that right now.
So we start with H-497. And that's for the women and men who have high levels of graduate ability. And third person we have is Juan Bosio. Is that okay? I remind everyone that we start at the limit of three minutes. You will hear the bell ring when we start, when the time starts because of the high levels we signed up for, the strictly enforcement three-minute limit. And we do not move through the number two people in the usual period of time, but we will reduce that to two minutes and possibly to one minute. So I encourage you to be as brief as possible and try not to repeat something that was already present. Uh, Mr. Bogan.
Thank you. Good morning, uh, to the panel, uh, chairs, uh, and to the committee here. I am here to provide testimony in support of a moratorium on high-stakes testing in Massachusetts by Bill H-340, uh, SC-294, and House 497. The National Association for the Advancing the Right to the NACP, the nearest to one civil rights organization in the country. The NACP continues its ardent work in the journey for justice in our democratic society. The New Haven Area Conference, NEAC, is developing and coordinating areas for NACP branches in the states of Rhode Island, Massachusetts, New Hampshire, Maine, and Vermont. Relative to this hearing, NEAC speaks for all NAACP branches in Massachusetts in adjusting the inevitable challenges in the Massachusetts school system. I think it's worth me mentioning the branches that I represent, uh, the NAACP branches that I represent. Amherst, Berkshire County, Boston, Brockton, Cambridge, Hickel, Martha's Vineyard, Murdock Valley, Mystic Valley, Bridge End, South Middlesex, Springfield, and Worcester. As you can see, the NAACP has a footprint that goes across the state in the representation of its branches. NEAC has closed high-stakes testing for many years. NEAC's concern is that standardized tests do not provide an adequate measure of student achievement and teacher effectiveness. While the levels of high-stake testing have been lower, the tests have actually missed the mark and have served to stymie student achievement. Also, the tests have failed to be a pathway for better teaching in classroom. The focus on these tests has distracted us from the primary objective of the educational system, of the educational system, to provide broad-based education to meet the challenges of tomorrow. Uh, Bills H-340, uh, H-497, and SC-294 provide relief from the negative impact of these tests on educational systems. While we focus on educational achievement and appropriate measurements, there are, there are different special considerations stated for applying the testing moratorium in each bill, and NEAC will use what the reasons are in these bills. In general, high-stakes testing is unfair to student, uh, school, to students, to school districts which do not have adequate resources. We think that few would argue that educational resources differ significantly among Massachusetts school districts regardless of the efforts that have been made to equalize those resources. Some are fortunate to have substantial resources and some school districts are not so fortunate. However, there is a parallel between adequate resources and effective educational achievement.
Mr. Bogan, if you could wrap up your time.
Uh, I will. I think you get the gist of our concern. It's a matter of resources and the integral education that's being provided for all of our citizens.
Thank you, Mr. Bogan. This way, if I can see if there are any questions remaining, I'll ask any questions from Mr. Bogan. Seeing none, thank you very much for your testimony. Um, I can call another next person. I just wanted to recognize that you have chosen my representative, Mark. We, uh, now move to, uh, now we count to seven.
My name is Natalie Calathorpe, and I teach a subsegment in special education classes. Is that okay? My name is Natalie Calathorpe, and I teach a subsegment of special education classes in large early childhood classes. I'm happy to be here today, and the accountability of such significant impact that the quality of education my students receive and the level of their education is possible. By definition, all students in America have disorders of speech, have no social communication disorder, or autism or intellectual disability. What they have in common is that while learning is not so easily, all of them tend to provide with meaningful challenges and the right time to look for it. In short, all of them can be called the same dangers of the future. I began teaching three years ago in identification of what some would call the error of a standardized test. From the moment I walked through the door as a teacher, it made clear to me that all my students were capable of doing well and that all of them should work on the same challenging material or more typical materials we're working on, I'll be able to well pick. This is the message I pass on to my students in the well-being of these terminals. Unfortunately, this is not always the message my students receive, particularly before school or health council, including special education students in their reports. A few years ago, while digging through a book in closet at my school, I found a set of notes that NEAC teaches my students. A lesson plan on how to about to take it all and some more to argue through the territory. This high school lesson, in the high school lesson, students are supposed to leave their teacher lecture and then complete a handout that has to be parroted to the actual status, in amount of civilians within the school. Nowhere in that lesson were students asked to examine the text and think about what I need. Nowhere in that lesson were students asked to weigh the challenges toward watching what a face is scheduled to form with the turn. Nowhere in that text were students really engaged or actively prepared. In short, they weren't learning much, but helped make the schedule into their future. Today, state accountability standards like the MCAS help forces change. I hope that students with disabilities need to be prepared for difficult roles and shouldn't feel the normal opportunity for them to go to a nearby school. Importantly, the MCAS also helps give students a secure and more safe environment. When I'm standing in front of my students trying to get them to identify the normal tests from primary to secondary, so that they often tell me it's too difficult. In those moments where motivating perseverance breaks some of their learned selflessness, it's not the abstract meaning of this skill of helping from their future, it's the MCAS. The simple fact that they don't pay attention, that if they don't pay attention and work hard, they won't graduate with their peers to motivate them to work hard to improve themselves. Taking the MCAS teaching numbers at young, what is the most important lesson they're equipped with in life? Many of my crucial education students do not pass the MCAS at all. Sometimes it's because the material really pushes their positive boundaries. These students who, like me, need to submit a portfolio of their directions. However, most often, my students don't pass because, to put in their own words, they didn't really try and weren't really getting it. And by "get again," my students don't actually mean they didn't understand the material. Rather, they don't, they don't understand the difference between the half part of the test and the second half of the test. Largely, with the MCAS process, teaches my students a print. It teaches them that even if they don't pass in obstacle one the first time, they need to be work-focused and work harder the second half of the test. That's even more important to the students.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the legislative side? Yes, Senator, of course. Thank you. Would you just answer me this question in terms of the, you know, the, 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 the port that require portfolios this time?
Sure.
How many of those are actually in our portfolios yourself? Do you have any sense of that?
All of their portfolios are accepted, I mean, the, um, in part that's because of the preparation work that's done throughout the process. And so a portfolio is not something that's done at the end if they haven't passed. They're building their portfolio throughout the year, especially my students who are, work very hard, but have, who have mental difficulties, so it's difficult for them to sometimes recall the information or they jump over words. But, um, the teachers that work with those students have submitted portfolios for a long time, and they have evidence, standard, state, and community, and they help prepare those students over the course of their entire time, but they still not subject it as a grand thing at the end if they didn't pass.
Thank you. I'm very glad to hear that, because initially, I think, the great portfolio assessments that were being accepted was quite awesome. I'm glad to hear that. Thank you. Any other questions? This is another question, this is a request that everybody in this testimony, is it being your parents, and sure you won't come?
I'm sorry, I know, sorry, but I just wanted to make sure. I'll submit a written form as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator. And there is a very good point relative to your testimony. Your testimony is, uh, to all members of the board, and there is no ready to actually testify versus submitting the testimony. So I encourage that, you know, as you, uh, as you know, who does, to testify, to do so. We will now move to, uh, the next person who I see who's waiting, uh, waiting right in front of me downstairs, who's Representative Spine. Is it a panel representative, please?
Good afternoon, Madam Chairman. I appreciate your time, and you've already been a lot there in the community before. I know we gather today to contribute commitment to ensuring that all of our shoulders be. My hope, and that of many educators and parents, that we use this legislation, House 340, as a vehicle to pause on adding additional high-stake tests into a mix, and that we use this opportunity to organize a broader group of stakeholders, one that can be much broader than those who actually develop the standards to begin with. This is not to say that we don't continue assessing. I think every educator, parent, and policymaker would continue to say assessing is very important, something that's done on a daily basis in classrooms. But while we do this, that we actually not confuse this with a, a lack of commitment to assessment and genuine achievement. For the sake of time, I will submit written testimony, but I wanted to leave a few thoughts. I speak as a legislator who's representing a community of high-achieving parents and educators who've had a long history of educational innovation, targeted the underrepresented students, and we also have high, under-resourced, under-resourced students, parents and students that are community. I'm actually someone who worked in public housing and under-resourced families, the first to graduate my high school, went to college, and bought my education, and bought every standardized test that I've ever taken. It was challenging to think that I was ultimately not smart enough. I didn't really experience success until I left college, where standardized tests were no longer a primary tool to decide whether or not I'm smart, and I could sell that tool. I also would say really importantly today is also a public school parent or a child to attend the level three school. I have watched firsthand over the last two years how the current high-stakes testing, the amount of pressure that's placed on teachers and students, that a six-year-old who controls it says, "If I don't pass that test, mom, that means I'm not smart." That is the culture that many students are feeling in that, whether we like it or not. Is that the reason not do high-stakes testing? No, that's not, that's not the primary reason. If the primary reason is to say that the current, um, if you look at the current data of how children are succeeding, those who are not succeeding prior to the high-stakes testing, or they don't have left behind, they are still not succeeding. We have not moved the needle significantly enough to justify the amount of stress, the amount of time that teachers are out of the classroom. I know in my class, teachers not learn in that fashion, because it comes along with rapid, so do many of these classmates. They are frustrated with the lack of opportunity that teachers have to be in the classroom to teach and to genuine achievement. I come from a school where there's a project-based learning, where they did do portfolio of tests, they took the test very seriously. Can the child actually answer question A, B, or C on a, um, on a standardized test versus being able to have forty-five-minute discussion about the specific reading or experiencing? That we actually are able to see that they are critical thinkers, who are absorbing material as relative to them at that moment. Not being able to answer or do well on standardized tests of high-stakes consequences is not the same as not being smart or comprehensive and being a high, uh, high-achieving learner. I would say the amount of time that teachers spend out of the classroom ensuring that your children, their students actually answer a question versus being able to be genuinely high-achieving learners, this legislation provides the opportunity to take a pause, to reflect, and to say, "What is it that we want our children to be able to answer? Is it important that they answer that question on division when they're still working on subtraction? Is it important that they answer this comprehension question when they're still learning how to comprehend stories and put together great literary works themselves that incorporate math, science, and art?" I asked, you know, earlier, somebody said to me, "I'm going to make this point," I was asked, "Well, what do you think of the consequences of potentially losing credit for funding if this legislation is passed?" Wasn't fully prepared to answer that question earlier. First time I talked with you, I didn't have some feedback. What I will say is that I brought this legislation forward, somebody who testified against MCAS seventeen years ago, my first time to plead counsel, I have constantly been concerned about how high-stakes testing label our children and actually do not change the needle, move the needle for closing the achievement gap or the opportunity gap, whatever I can think of it. This legislation allows us to take a deep breath and have a conversation where that's things that are not self-taught. I think, what if this legislation was something very similar? If they're taking the pause right now, gives us the opportunity to continue being the lead in the nation where we actually start asking, "What are children learning? Are they learning the things that will ensure that they attend colleges, that they have meaningful, happy, high-paying jobs that allow them to take care of themselves and their families?" Currently, the path of high-stakes testing doesn't do that. Having six tribes to give MCAS and MCAS does not assure whether or not our children have confidence and the experience ability does not far more determine who they're being taught and whether or not they are being true, genuine, or innovative. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. It's the committee, uh, Senator Vega, I represent the State Department, and I'm hoping to hold up a hearing to talk about the education situation in the course of that's another day. I'm going to speak in favor, at least in this year, of the intent of H-340, S-294, and S-4, H-497. When we were in school, we were based on our grades, in our merit, our attendance, in our past of class, past graduation. There was not another obstacle that our way that we had to pass English graduate. So things have changed. I will bring up two points. First being, when we look at the students coming out of private or a faith-based education, faith degree, and they're coming to our public high schools, the financial basis of parents can all, they maintain a higher education, those students that come from those private or faith-based education systems that have not been tested and tested and tested for the last eight years do well in our high schools. They now, they have passed without situation. Why? Because they learned to learn, and learn critical thinking skills. They have a love of learning. What is it that they're doing differently in those situations, because it also reminds that we're not doing our own public schools to pass those MCAS tests in high school level? The second issue I want to bring up, I know they're all very aware of this, is when we look at the percentage of students who do pass high school and do pass MCAS, and go to our community colleges, our universities, and take the HBL and the list of the math. Almost a third of our students in Massachusetts, and naturally, almost fifty percent, the articles that just come out this last week. So what are we preparing our students for if they're graduated high school, they've passed MCAS, but yet can't take English one-on-one and math one-on-one? That's a concern that I'm actually concerned about, because it's cost our families and our students a lot of extra time and money to be in college, but not actually prepared for. So the question, what are these tests for? Which, I think, a moratorium reveals the opportunity to review, to step back, to make sure that the margin is tested, whether they're being tested in a proper way and having the actual results that we need. We need testing to see what students are at, what bodies are at, what communities are at, but it should not have that official impact to hold our students back. So I hope that there is something that we're able to work on as a committee that will bring the opportunity for us to have that time to reflect on what we're actually testing for, to look at these load systems and incorporate it, to, we have the best public schools in Massachusetts, and we're in the scuttle of high-stakes testing. Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman Vice, and members of this committee. I'm here today to support, uh, H-340. I was former upon school committee, uh, for eight years, and I've become increasingly concerned with the amount of time that's being spent for administration in that test. This ever-reducing portion of school time should be dealt with on behalf of the reexamine the policies and the knowledge students are receiving. In addition, as many important decisions regarding district, schools, educators, and students are based on the outcome of these tests, the time given after the test, testing date is often predominantly focused on test preparation. This is unfair to our students who experience a desire and classic, who stipulate creativity and athleticism and helping write shots. By studying these issues, we can appropriately determine the cost of each test on resources such as funding, school, class time, classroom time, and overall debt of our children's education. This information significantly assists us as legislators to implement appropriate assessment tools in our school system. I believe that this bill provides the breakdowns by allowing community stakeholders, parents, educators, community leaders, legislators, administrators, officials, and ensure schools that their customers are working. We should be most concerned about, what we, what we, we should be most concerned about is the children, the families, or four, who often don't have equal resources in schools. In addition, the most, uh, most of these children do not have a way of thinking. Poverty is the major problem for children in schools. That's something that we should really be looking at and trying to test and address. Thank you for your remarks.
Thank you. Are there any questions, any representatives? Seeing none, thank you for your testimony. We will now move to, uh, to settle for those members of the legislative group coming in. We are all ready to take the public and members of the legislative groups. And the, uh, next person is, uh, Hethen, Ross, uh, where are you? And just so you're prepared, in case you have time, the next person out of that will be Brittany Better.
Thank you very much. My name is Bishop Barrett Swirumay, and my speech is hot, because I'm quite surprised to actually be out here to speak to the fans that I am. I am a dad of two daughters that are lost in the public school system. One in the Caribbean, and they complain, and one at Boston Academy, Rossbury, Rochester. And also, one of my coaches, and this is my parent, Cassel, as well, both together as well with our, uh, high school schools. I can only favor, as a parent, to speak in favor of H-340, Rep. Decas, Representative Decas Phil, as well as Senator Phil, uh, Two Night Phil, both currently at home on high-stakes testing, uh, and clearly asking for a better rating system, this is true. It's specifically talking about town hall schools. I'd like to, uh, production, as a photographer, I think we were quite capable there, which is a PPS school that was taken over last year, uh, left to Holland. It was seized by the state, a classic circle of parent school, and it sounded on paper like a clean-cut, uh, story that didn't account for was actually working at that institution, where staff, parents, teachers, and the district were engaged in, uh, in a project that actually led to wait lists at this circle of parent PPS school. Things were changing, the school began to stabilize and affect, and radar itself, and pride was returning, especially in the early days, to the people inside that school. But, uh, because of test scores, which frankly are better measures of a student's level of quality, the ability to measure the mix that's rolling between these, was, was, was this by the state. Our schools include social workers, they have engagement specialists, nurses, and we look at dedicated and deplorable teachers to do what they wanted to in the first place we just did teach. The irony of wholesale chaos of these teachers at Holland is that other PPS schools might be equally recruiting them. So I suppose I should be grateful having some, uh, sort of measure for that. Massachusetts, we seem to be really, really at the hammer of assessments on this sort of angle of this private-based system. But I think we've just got Mr. Ratt.
Can I ask the Ratt?
Of course. I really heard that there's a video of private school website, which talks about the integration of modernized products, and gave students, sitting in the field, studying biology, they're engaged, they're rigorous, uh, they're rigorous curriculum, and we should have that.
Thank you. Thank you for the three minutes. And if you have more than that three minutes for the testimony, please submit your testimony. Are there any questions from the committee? I've seen none, thank you for your testimony. Uh, Brittany Better?
My name is Brittany Better, and I teach sixth grade English in Excel Academy in Chelsea. I'm offering testimony in opposition to H-340 because these issues have such a significant impact on the work of students and teachers at my school. We begin our school year with our sixth graders discussing the concept of defying the odds. We fade it up, that it's a tale of two cities, Chelsea and Houston. We look at the incomes of each city, the UTEC scores, and the high school graduation rates. Students are immediately astounded by what they see, and when asked why these disparities exist, they have incredibly insightful responses related to quality of education and access to resources. And then we look at the scores of Excel heat graders, which surpass those of students in the union. I've stressed to students that likely as they ask about smarter than some other students, given the system is fair. But our only option is to defy the odds and gain access to opportunities that will allow us to change the system more than this. Holding our schools and teachers accountable for these trajectory-changing results says that we believe in this possibility and impact of ending it for all of our students, regardless of the neighborhood that we're teaching. This year, we opted to administer the PARC assessment as an effort for schools. I remember saying first examine the release item back in August, and honestly, I had my doubts that students would be able to reach that level. However, as we come to the end of the school year, I can say emphatically that they have surpassed my expectations. PARC alignment with Common Core has upped the rigor of my course and pushed me to develop students as well-rounded writers. In doing so, I discovered that, one, it will get for writing, engaging dialogue, and narrative. A September, very effectively integrates information and world resources, and all of my students have analyzed how the offers choices lead to a specific purpose. In addition, the emphasis of PARC on textual evidence has led to much richer student discussions in my classroom, and has pushed me to recognize the level of thinking that my sixth graders are truly capable of. That is not to say that PARC is perfect. However, I'm excited by the changes that they have recently proposed to combine the PBA and the VRA assessment. This signals to me that they are open to the feedback that teachers are providing, and will continue to refine the assessment to meet the needs of students, teachers, schools, and communities. Every teacher would agree that standardized tests are an imperfect measure of the complex output that a student's growth has earned in school. However, without the data that is provided by these assessments, we would have no method for seeing how our students stack up and where to revise our approach. As a teacher, I am accountable for leading my students to academic growth that will open up a lot of options to them. I believe in my students, I believe in my fellow teachers, and I believe that PARC is a step in the right direction for measuring whether they're delivering on the promise of helping our students to defy the odds.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the committee? See, Madam, thank you for your testimony. We will now recognize some of the members of the legislature. I encourage my colleagues to use brief I encourage my colleagues to use briefs possibly conceiving literally hundreds of people waiting for test class. I, but for doing alternating with representatives and legislators and the public, in attempting to make people order in which day arrived. I know that there was a number of type numbers downstairs, and so we represent, we recognize that there's a type number first, and I'd like to take three more time and then to speed things up, so the representative, the representative, the representative, if I'm wrong, please, I can correct them. Representative President?
Thank you, Representative President. I certainly appreciate your time.
You can see the microphone.
You speak greatly in support of the Austin 40 more, more testing, parent children, health schools, and policy maker, I understand that your results have had value to provide quality education, but I just love, expressed your concern as a show of your decision to allow this all. First of all, to this priority that a time of working convergence, like wellness today, civics, or any program that we can engage some of our most hard-to-reach students, and schools are charging, growing an often excessive piece of activity for athletics, arts, and transportation, and we're clearly not moving, currently, to relative specifically to mental health, mental health, education, sees difficult to judge, and priority to direct, whether, I think, with all your skill, school resources, or testing changes, that somebody, say that's administrative, or maybe actually live up to this time, or we need to have a certain consideration. And I would further add, with that official finding, I have very serious concerns that by requiring schools to implement on the platform in the future, we challenge the foundation previously, which will further exacerbate other productive available resources into this particular way of other, other services. Second, I have no doubt concern, as a parent, to be a parent, more than anything, that I take testing in general as comments in educational conversation, to the fact not go off on our children in the school, the simple message that we have, do more about passing the test, and challenging oneself to join the thing we learn from our students. Many believe that the future success of our children will improve their ability to navigate and to account for the risks, and to think of it as we use those skills to direct the odds for the education of over a thousand testing, general, and especially standardized testing. Concerned at the main, and that is specifically. I'd also like to report in support of Senator Jalenville, Senate 298, and ask her to reflect on the issue.
Thank you, Representative Chairman, committee members, everyone else. I appreciate that you can take that turn, I'll put most of my comments in writing, but I did want to give a shout out to the importance of student data privacy. So I'm mainly here to express support for H474, because my concern, building a long way forward in creating a tested graph culture, which is displacing education. As a member of the higher education community, graph is so long time, with the fact that MCAS passing and high school graduation do not correlate with college readiness. And as we, we interacted with the state department of higher education trying to understand why so many students need regional courses, who don't finish in time, get discouraged, and drop out, we've been told, well, MCAS is designed to assess college readiness, which, you know, makes me, makes me wonder whether it's true. I know that standardized tests just correlate highly the parents' education and income, but the question of higher education as a best predictor of college success is actually greatly offensive. I understand that testing gives us valuable information about student achievement, but we really pushed it to a place where it's turning school into a joyless enterprise, sending a lot of kids, putting them under tremendous psychological pressure, and telling them that they're not successful at an early age when their test scores are low, which creates a terrible feedback loop. It also tends to disgrace other kinds of coaching and activities. As I said, I will put the rest of my testimony in writing, but I appreciate your listening now. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Representative Chairman. I'm here in support of H474, student data privacy. Our schools have undergone a technological revolution, and this has led to the collection of massive amounts of sensitive data about students by the companies who provide those services. Existing laws like PERFUR have serious gaps that allow operators to use all available student data they collect for commercial purposes that are unrelated to education, and that includes using the data to target advertising students, and includes collecting some sensitive types of information. H474 and H195, which are identical, would close the gaps in existing laws and apply rules directly to tech companies who are invited in class. It would prohibit them from using sensitive information about K-12 students for commercial purposes like targeted advertising, or creating personal profiles about students of non-education purposes. It would prohibit them from selling student data. Many companies have already recognized the need for tech data, and 150 of them have already signed on to a student privacy pledge, which is in line with this bill. But the pledge is nothing more than a promise, and it has no force or mechanism. We need this legislation to get teeth in the pledge, and get all companies in on board. California, Kentucky, Idaho, Louisiana, Maryland, Virginia, Washington, New Hampshire, and Rhode Island have already taken steps to protect student data, and the mask that we ask, add Massachusetts to this list with the bill to protect about privacy of our children. Student data should not be used, should be used, only to improve education and help kids learn. It should not be used for commercial purposes like targeted advertising, or creating non-education profiles for the profit businesses who gather motivation to education. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions from the committee?
Representative, I just wanted to add, you're saying that the school that is really taking all this data is to use against our own, that's, and this bill would prevent that from happening. Tech companies that come into the school, get the use of the data, and we want to prevent them from using it for commercial purposes. So in Massachusetts, the bill's going to have that in place right now? No, there are, I listened to the states that have, it's about 10 and a half laws that are giving it in place right now. That's kind of my, that we have some concern about as well. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Now move to Carlos Rojo. And just so we can prepare the next person, we have, after, you're on, it's ready. Please allow the people to step in line and get to the microphone. I appreciate that.
Good morning. Thank you all so much to the Joint Committee on Innovation for hosting this very important meeting. I'm here to speak in support of H497 as well as H340. My name is Carlos Rojo, I'm a graduate of Boston Public Schools, graduated in 2012. I serve as an alumni staff, youth honor board with Boston Student Advisory Council. Our mission is to place young people at the center of decisions that affect and impact our lives. We believe that when adults and decision makers follow the good people, good things can happen. I'm also the candidate coordinator at the Student Elementary Movement, the largest undocumented youth learning rights organization in Massachusetts. I should also mention, I have a younger brother at the Edwards Middle School in Charles Town, and he'll be going to Boston Community Leadership Academy next year. As you can imagine, I work with young people who are brilliant, who are brave, resilient, creative, smart, and capable. I also live with one. Many of them also struggle to let their talents and skills and thinking shine through a scantron sheet after scantron sheet, which increasingly determine their success, their ability to be promoted, their ability to graduate, and continue to develop the knowledge skills. I bring their collective thoughts. We are unequivocally opposed to high-stakes testing, being used as an indicator of how ready a student is to be promoted or to graduate. We reject the notion that a set of multiple choice questions and a scantron sheet can determine and crystallize the entirety of the student. In fact, studies show that it do serve as an indicator of class, but that's unfair. We are opposed to high-stakes testing being used to evaluate and blame our teachers, who often have no choice but to scrap teaching plans in order to prepare their students for tests that only measure a very narrow and limited form of ability, in order to keep their jobs, or to keep their schools from getting closed. When a test is the be all, and all my young people are compromised, they are limited and inhibited, they're not being helped or supported, their knowledge and skills are not being recognized. High-stakes testing especially hurts kids who come from under-resourced families in the community, including immigrant students and English language learners with whom I work. And by time evaluation requirements to high-stakes testing, kids who actually need comprehensive and individualized support to acquire the knowledge and skills they need to succeed or fall into the cracks. Testing might be one form of measuring some kind of intelligence and some kind of capability, but it's not the only form, and we should be utilizing other successful models of measuring how ready a young person is for college or career. High-stakes testing also contributes to the school prison pipeline by which young people are being pushed out of schools, added to prisons, and finally, I'm excited to have real conversations with this committee as well as the legislature about the kinds of resources and tools our schools need, committing more out of the comment. Thank you.
So for those of you who may not have been here earlier, we, we've discovered any kind of reaction to the speakers, it takes up time, and time that is made prevent one of you from getting to the microphone. So thank you very much for your involvement. Where did Mr. Rojo go? We didn't have a chance to see, were there any questions, Representative Rojo, from the committee? Staying out, and thank you for your testimony. Colleen.
Good morning, Representative Chairman. If you want to just speak. Good morning, Representative Chairman. My name is Colleen Moore, I teach at U Michigan High School in Hyde Park. I teach AP language and composition, honors in college English in grade 11, and I've also taught 12th grade literature and composition in grade 10. I'm here to speak in opposition to H497 and H340. As a teacher, I'm a parent's firsthand in complexities and benefits of a high-quality assessment. One of the complexities is that students enter a classroom with various skill sets, so having a high-quality assessment tool to help determine the factors between the achievement and the assessment. And one of the benefits of high-quality assessment is that it holds schools and teachers' economy. When I went to school in the 70s, it was possible to graduate from high school and be functionally deliberate. I know people who graduated and aren't functionally deliberate. That said, it was, that said, they had limited college opportunities and only limited employment opportunities. Today, it would be a rarity to graduate high school and be functionally deliberate because of the providers of labor that we have called quality assessments, and to make sure the students do not fall throughout the practice of education system. As an advanced placement teacher, who has had many students, both immigrant as well as English language learners qualified on the AP exam, resulting in them not having the pay for the English month-long class, I can speak to what it takes to prepare students for a college career. And I say to you unequivocally that the PARC assessment is the best tool available to assess college and career readiness. The test aligns to the Common Core standard and enables students to benefit from a rigid set of academic expectations. Parents, caregivers, and stakeholders who appreciate the complexities and benefits of exam schools and advanced placement tests, but never rob their child with the opportunity to excel in the college preparatory work. That will lead them to an easier transition to college. So why should the fate of other students be any different? In my position as a high school teacher, I bridge the high school to college skill sets, but the reality is that my students achieve as a result of clear standards, competent teaching, and rigorous assessments. That will all merit a loss of college. So the question is, so the question is up for debate, is what testing tools should be used to fairly measure student progress and student and teacher continuity? My answer is PARC. The answer is not the PARC, but because of the current technology share of lack of resources. The idea is the school and district has the opposite capacity to improve its educational practice, and often for students' performance implies capacity for collective deliberation and action. With each of academic years, we as teachers expand professional change, so we are good at it. As the birthplace of public education in United States of America, we set the standards for equitable education. PARC will push us up as a state to have technology and keeps the technological skills needed for PARC and living in the 24th century.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the committee?
Thank you, Representative Chairman. Thank you for your work as teachers, teachers, if you're teaching, make these use. How much time would you say you devote to preparing these individuals for the test?
The, the force work for AP is all you, so every day that I come to my preparing to take the exam, which always, they can compare the problem. So it's not, we teach you, that's what we teach you still.
And, thank you for your testimony. For the record, I would like to indicate that Representative Muselli has submitted her testimony because she was unable to be here today. I'd like to recognize Representatives Goldie, Harrington, and Rowe, and just remind you that we have many people that are waiting in after two days, three hours. Thank you very much.
I'm going to stand, because I'm going to be very, very quick. You have written the testimony, so I'm not going to go over everything that I wrote, but I didn't, there were some things I didn't want to share that was not in the written testimony. That was, that for 10 years, I was a high school history teacher. And as a teacher and as a legislator, I embrace high standards. And it was during my time of teaching that the MCAS first came into the schools. Since that time, MCAS and high-stakes testing have taken on a light of their own. I would just ask this committee, I understand, and I want to totally pull the plug, that think about putting the brakes on, give the green light to teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just going to sit, and it will also be brief, and I had some talk a little bit here that I haven't got to go over, but I think you've heard them, and you will continue to hear them throughout the day. So I too am going to go from a very personal perspective. I do understand that testing is a necessary evil in education, and I do believe that there was an advantage at some point with the MCAS testing. But what I strongly believe is the problem is that we are subjecting our kids to such an increased level of anxiety, and, and sometimes physical dominance on top of it, due to the stress that we are putting them under for these high-stakes consequences we are associating with both MCAS and PARC testing. I, I myself did, I won't say great academically, but I did okay academically, and my academic performance was never really reflected in a standardized test, because I myself am a very anxious standardized test. Had I been a child that was subjected to the warnings, preparation, I would probably not only made myself sick, I would have done very poorly. Without that type of consequence being attached to the testing I had, I was able to graduate from high school, I was able to graduate from college, I was able to graduate from law school, I was able to perform in my job. Maybe I would have taken a different tack if some high-stakes testing had said I wasn't that qualified. So I think putting that pressure on our students is honestly cool, because we may put their mindset where we don't want it to be, based on consequences that are really out there here. So I would ask that you support H340 and in the act relative to a moratorium on high-stakes testing and PARC. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Chairman. And who do you think is in the committee? Sure, sorry. Sorry. Okay, is that a little bit bad? So I'm also speaking in support of H340, as well as the other bills that if you don't put moratorium on high-stakes testing, maybe you would at least consider not making it a graduation requirement. A little bit of my background is that I work with a lot of agencies who make performance measures and metrics, and when I look at the way that these tests are being done, I don't think they're measuring what they're intended to be measuring. When you measure something against other students, you're basically doing When you measure something against other students, you're basically doing what we call scripted statistics. And at the end of that, we're going to create essentially a bell curve, and you know, you 're going to have some people who do really well, and some people who do really poorly. And that's going to be reflecting, you know, more than just the education somebody's getting. That's going to be reflecting, you know, where somebody's coming from, what their, you know, cognitive capabilities that they're born with. So these things are, you know, not reflecting what the test should be doing. To properly measure our education, how well our teachers are doing, it actually, it's a lot more complicated than the current testing scheme that we're using. You have to have a treatment group, you have to have control group, you have to make sure the two are the same, and you have to be able to rule out third variables. And that's something that the current testing, MCAS, or Hyde, they don't do. They don't rule out third variables. So the manner in which these tests are being offered, in my opinion, they're missing what we're actually trying to capture, and they're capturing a lot of the third variables that are responsible for the test scores, not necessarily the education that somebody's getting. So this is, you know, why you probably heard a lot of testimony today about how, you know, people of the lower socioeconomic status are going to do as well on these, because they have those third variables and taking impact. With that, I was remembering the testimony, it's completely different than what I just said, it just makes different points. You know, it's still a support, but this is something I'd rather explain verbally rather than in writing. So with that, I'd say good night.
Thank you. I would also, well, this kind of these hours, and the cross-selling, I thought, and I think about the people around me, it's very bad when I use your cell. So that's, I mean, the problem with the form for you to be able to run the test.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, and to the rest of the committee. I'm actually here for House 370, a bill that I filed, which seeks to allow school districts the ability to opt out of the Columbia Board of Hyde. I believe that we're not ready for it, to go out. I think there are many school districts who do not have the resources, especially these tough fiscal times, go out and get the technology that's necessary to do the exam and to do the teaching methods. I think that it is ultimately a disservice to our students and our teachers, when these states have already lacked the so-called Columbia Board, the national standards that are being created, that I think Massachusetts could consider also leaving at some point. I understand that that's up to the Board of Education. I believe the governor is going to review a penalty, and I think that's something that this committee, as well as the legislature, should take note of, and truly study itself on its value, and whether or not we should proceed to make it the new standard. I would hope that the committee would take a hard look at it, and the committee would study, I think the committee would create a subcommittee, or do whatever it would, can, and take a hard look at this before this becomes fully implemented. This is not a conservative versus liberal issue. Back in Delaware District, I've had people from the conservative side, even the liberal side, who've come to me and expressed deep concern over Columbia Board of Hyde. And so I'm translating that to you today before your committee. Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you committee members, and I hope, and the Board of Education will do something that we know is self-reliant. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions, representatives? Seemun, who can answer that person's lineup under one of the seven barbed fields? Black field here? And after the fields, we have a burning for you.
I reside in Boston, and I am an retired educator from the Boston Public Schools, where I served and behave in the Office of Equity for over 25 years. Prior to accepting this role, I served as an elementary teacher for nine years. In spite of my love of teaching, it was due to my strong desire to address the inequities in education that I painfully decided to leave my classroom and accept the position in the Office of Equity. I come before you today on behalf of the Black Educator Alliance of Massachusetts, an organization founded in 1965 by a small group of educators committed to the pursuit of quality education for all students, but particularly the students of color. Bean has been the forefront of promoting excellence in teaching and learning and steadfast in advocacy for eliminating the academic achievement opportunity to learn gap. With that said, Bean is actively opposed to the current overuse and misuse of standardized tests and the extremely negative impact on all children, but particularly children and communities of color. The overuse and misuse of high stakes testing has resulted in denial of diplomas while most economically disadvantaged children who desperately need a high school diploma to access a pathway out of poverty, resulted in a decline of rapid financial resources for course offerings and educational support services, as more and more funds are expended on testing, the narrowing of an already limited curriculum in many inner-city schools where rigorous culturally competent teaching and learning is required to eliminate the opportunity to learn gap, closing schools due to test results causing some students to experience sometimes two and three times the instability and emotional trauma of having their schools closed, and the impact of being labeled a failure over and over again. How is it that punishment is a method that is used to address our deeply ingrained inequity issues in education, instead of providing the support and resources required to bring access to all of our schools? This current approach has been extremely destructive, and I am sure this is not what this legislature intended when enacting the Education Reform Act of 1993. Bean joins with the many parents, students, educational officials, educators, and others who ask for your support of the bills such as House Bill 497, Senate 314, H340, and others, and I'm before you to reverse the course of ill-armed that is hurting too many of our students, not to mention the impact and joys and rewards of teaching our most precious children. We ask that you support the bills that align with our constitution requirement that we cherish education, and that for least, Bean asks that you enact a moratorium on high stakes testing for at least three years, until an academic studies commission and assessment process is in place that education is sound, fair, and removes the punitive elements embedded in our current practices. Thank you for your time and for allowing Bean the opportunity to address you.
Thank you. Are there any questions, representatives? Seemun, thank you for having your testimony. Bernie, I believe, since, first of all, and just so well that we know, the next two who are Lou Pugner and Marie Salab, and so your fellow.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Brittany Orton, and I am a fifth-grade teacher in Boston Public Schools. I serve a range of students from various cultures, abilities, and socioeconomic backgrounds. I come before you this morning and this afternoon, not because I have my own agenda, but because I would like to give my students a voice. When I ask my fifth-grade students to write an essay about the impact of testing on their learning, these are some of their testimonies that I'd like to share with you. First, I'm going to introduce you to Nia. Hi, my name is Nia Velas, and I'm 11 years old, and when I grow up, I want to be a surgeon. I want to go to medical school for more than five years. My teacher is Romulus. She isn't the best teacher yet because she's mean, and she's a mean teacher because she knows that I can accomplish stuff that I've never been able to accomplish before, because she would push me to boundaries I've never been able to cross before. I want to introduce you to my student Sophie. Hi, my name is Sophie. This is my first year at the Channing School, but my whole life, I used to go to another school called Greenwood's. I was like, my first test that I had at the Channing was easy, but when we took Hyde, the test was very complex. It made my mind think, wow. But I think the Hyde is great because of getting me ready for college and my career. So when I took the Hyde, I think the people who made it really wanted us to fail. But the other tests, they give me simple questions like what a first grader can answer. I think the Hyde is getting me ready for college, to be someone in life, to be someone in life. The impact that the Hyde is doing is great to our minds to think like college students. This student I'm going to introduce you is Asha LaCosta. She says, my parents are immigrants, and they moved to the United States to get a job. Later, they had me, so I can have a better life in education. In my opinion, the hardest test is the end-of-the-year test like Hyde. I think sometimes these tests can be stressful, but on the other hand, Dr. King says, we have to discern the truth from the false, the real from the unreal, the facts from the fiction. That's what the test tells me to do. In the end, I conclude with, I am an educator, and I am a member of the NAACP Educational Committee. I don't think this is an issue we should buy to about. I think this is a civil rights issue. All our children need to have some standards, and if we take away the testing, we take away the standards for our state. We need to be able to measure our students across the state to see where they are, and we need to use that data to go into the schools that need resources, and we need to implement and do what we need to do for these children, because they want to learn, and they want to be surgeons and doctors and lawyers and teachers, but we can't ignore them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm very appreciative of your willingness to share this very personal story. Are there any questions, representatives? I appreciate your testimony, if you would like to submit what you have to write in, I'd be very appreciative of that. Thank you. The representatives that are here, I'll just call you all together. Representative Peter, we leave you here first, and then our representative Lee, and my people, the large, and the way to show that, and we consider that. Thank you, Chairwoman, I should all members of the committee. I'm really proud to be here today to speak in favor of House 340, and in three-year, suggested three-year moratorium on high stakes testing. I just want to speak briefly about our situation in Worcester. We are welcoming the committee, and we receive a largest number of refugees in the state. Over the past five years, we welcomed over 1,600 refugees to Worcester. There's no advance warning about when these families are coming, or who is in the family, for our state departments to anticipate their needs, and so this is leading to a lot of stress. I've been talking to parents and students and teachers in preparation for today, and one of those stories I just heard this past week was about a Ghanaian student who had just come in, who had entered the high school, had gone through the office, and another student was then asked to bring this student to the MCAS test on his first day. So, and it just seems like we are not allowing for students that do not have English, spoken language, or a written language, they can recognize time, it takes seven years, 12 years, to really be accomplished, and we're asking students to take the MCAS or standardized test into the future. So I feel in a lot of ways that people are suffocating under a lot of this pressure. And then, I'd like to share one more story, and I don't need to be too long, but I think it's interesting. In my neighborhood school, we are a large and growing population, and we're a challenged community economically. We have a wonderful program in partnership with Worcester Art Museum, and because of this school's proximity to the museum, we were able to build into the curriculum for business for each grade level, to link their social studies curriculum to the collection at the Art Museum. And I happened to teach there for many years, and I saw this great program. Along with that experience, each of these students got a lifelong membership to the Worcester Art Museum. It was tremendous. And yet, three years ago, we blocked it. We have to let it go, and we have to let it go. Why? Because we needed time for testing. There wasn't time to walk to the museum. There wasn't time to have this experience anymore. So unfortunately, that partnership that resulted, that experience no longer exists. So we can't watch our testing, and we, you know, we don't understand sometimes the cost. The other fellow I just want to speak to briefly is one that I've got, 418, and Senate Bill 311, that speaks to the post-moratorium procedures as well, allowing for students that meet all of the requirements for graduation to actually receive a diploma, to not be helped out by not being able to test in a standardized test. Right now, in Worcester, if you meet every requirement after 13 years of school, but you don't have the MCAS, you cross the stage at graduation, but you don't get a diploma, you get a certificate of attendance. And I think that's really the same. So, again, I'm glad to be here and hope that we can, we can go through the process. Representative Lee?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be brief, I've submitted a written testimony. I'm here as a father of four, and on behalf of all the teachers and parents who've called me over this subject over the past couple of years. I just want to kind of take a, just to echo my colleague, we need to step back in this standardized testing, because we need to look at our children's livelihoods. These tests are forcing our childrens to be memorization and look, and it's taking away the teachers' right to teach. We all have our favorite teachers from elementary and high school, and these were the teachers who engaged us, they challenged us, they came up with new ideas, and they were creative, and they made us think, and they went outside the box, and they went off of tangents, and then you had discussions, and you learned, and you loved the learning, and you were able to continue to love learning for the rest of your life, and you'll want to do great things, and challenge authority, and do what's right for the world. If all we are teaching our children is memorization out of a book, and forcing our teachers to be robots, and being purely accountable on how they are measured on a particular test, we are not only doing a great disservice to our teachers, but we are doing a great disservice to our children, and we're going to be forced to have a teacher of children that cannot think, and they're going to go into the world and not be able to think, they're just going to be able to repeat facts back, and that is a shame. That's not what America is based on, that is not what Massachusetts education is based on. And having that is, I think, the most important thing, and I believe in standardized testing, with the teacher being solely judged on that measure, and the children's being judged on that measure, creates that atmosphere. Thank you very much.
And the actions refrain from any demonstrations. Representative Powell?
Thank you, Madam Chair, both chair and distinguished panel, committee members. One test does not fit all. One test score does not determine the outcome of many One test score does not determine the outcome of many people in this room today. I'm a big supporter of education, and it is my desire to see every student thrive and succeed, become productive citizens of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and beyond. We know that in order for this to occur, students must be challenged and prepared with the skills necessary, the discipline, and the academics needed to one day face the ever-changing employment and life situations that they will encounter. Our kids are not test scores. A parent of five children, one before the test scores and four of them. It's not a basketball game where the highest scorer wins the championship because it's life after basketball. And you've still got to be able to deal with the life situations that are beyond. The high-stakes test, standardized testing industry is making bits of doubt. And in my opinion, without any real proven results, if it was a test score, I would not be here before you today. That would determine my success. Believe me. It does not prepare students for the real challenges for college or the life after, because it doesn't prepare for the social and critical thinking skills that are necessary to proceed, proceed. I ask the committee to take in consideration the legislation before us and the detrimental effects of high-stakes standardized testing, having only compounded over time in a closer examination of these consequences, I believe, in my opinion, are all overdue. Thank you.
Any other questions for the representatives? Thank you, President.
Thank you for this topic, committee. I'm a former school psychologist in Massachusetts, as well as currently a professor at Northeastern University. And I testify in support of Bills H-497, H-340, H-418, S-311, S-294, and H-3395. M-CAS and other high school exit exams were implemented for two principal reasons: to reverse the supposed rising tide of mediocrity in our public schools and to close the achievement gap between different groups of students. The best available research, including the research reviewed by the August National Research Council, indicates that these tests accomplish neither of these aims, but instead honor many of our most vulnerable students. One of these negative consequences is the disproportionate denial of the FOMAs to students with disabilities and English language learners. The M-CAS diploma requirement has been exacerbated instead of diminishing the opportunity gap for these students. In 2010, sixty-nine percent of the high school seniors who failed to pass the M-CAS were in special education. By 2014, that number had increased to seventy-five percent. In 2010, only eleven point five percent of high school seniors who failed to pass the M-CAS were English language learners. But by 2014, that number had jumped to eighteen point five percent. I'm in favor of standards, but in what moral universe is it justified to have a standard that almost exclusively denies high school FOMAs to English language learners and students in special education? Although Massachusetts hasn't altered its assessment for students with disabilities, it is a dead end for almost all the students who take it. Last year, only one of nine hundred and sixty-four high school students, you heard me correct, only one out of nine hundred and sixty-four high school students in special education who attempted the English Language Arts Assessment, Ultimate Assessment, was able to score needs improvement or higher. And only three of the nine hundred and seventy-nine were able to pass the math version. Does this mean my time's up? Oh, okay. All right. So the aforementioned bills will help prevent the unfortunate life-changing effects of the M-CAS has had on so many students. Thank you.
Any other questions for the representatives? The next person we have signed up is going to go, pardon me, Mr. Brewer? Mr. Brewer?
Yes, my question is.
Are there any questions for the committee? Representative Palas presented himself.
First of all, thank you for giving us the dollars of context to this problem. Have you submitted written testimony?
I have here, and how many copies do I submit? I have twenty, so.
Okay, so that was trying to write a question earlier, someone who was talking about creating portfolios of segments. And so, I think for giving us a certain amount of context, the Senate, we should have the bill that's saying that all the regulations and requirements, they are allowed to manipulate and hopefully to allow them to be able to support success and failure like strengths. And we need to give them the great opportunity. So I just really want to make it clear that I'm just really quick and was trying to explain the fact that I'm really lucky to give that to us. Because I agree with you, Sam, it's probably important and very sensitive to the commentary that's being by the students and by the department for making sure that people do have the O.C., these are all the end-of-year critical thinking, creative and operational communication. So that can have an impact with that, being the sole determinant of your success, really is a policy assessment. I have four children. I have one dyspraxia, a cancerous exam itself, and that to use at school. I have one with extreme anxiety. She goes through it pretty quickly, too. But, you know, credit guide, which is across all communities, is not a good, is usually a bad factor. And I do think there are people that test well, again, but don't test, it's not necessarily in favor of their future success. We're thinking always in terms of the opposite, right? There are people that don't test well, but I think both things, people that don't test well might be able to make, make combinations in their, they'll look at their, whatever they, and tend to be, there are other types of kind of that have. So I'm just, I'm assuming what you're talking about, this really want that test form, thank you very much.
You make excellent points. In regard to the altered assessment, why have an altered assessment that virtually no one passes? How does that make any sense?
Representative Palas?
Professor, if I assume correctly, and I suppose the students may read, we need some type of testing. If we assume you're in favor of that, is there an instrument that can be developed that is something that shows us an accurate and timely measure of someone that has passed at least the baseline, that we could do one instrument across the board? Or we need to look at something that maybe is given in parts depending on someone's background?
It is a important, complex question. Different assessments have different purposes. The M-CAS, it was designed to, is one measure among many potential measures. If we want a full picture of someone's academic functioning, we have to use multiple measures because any one measure is flawed, one indication. So as you were saying, one measure might be appropriate for one person and miss the vote with someone else. So these are valid and reliable measures perhaps for a group, but there's individuals in that group that it won't necessarily accurately measure what they can do. That's why all the professional associations, American Educational Research Association, the American Psychological Association, the National Association of Schools Psychologists, and others say, "If you're going to make a high stakes decision, you don't rely on one measure alone," because each, any one measure is flawed. And you really need to use multiple measures.
If I could ask you the same question I asked the secretary, is it possible that we can develop, and I said the same thing to you, it's a lot of people on stage, is it possible to come up with some type of instrument that can be used, that can give us this information in a timely manner? Or do we need to give a nuclear oxygen, get rid of it, and look at something for?
Well, yeah, there is, there is. But by custom only pertains to the high stakes contingency, which changes the nature of testing and puts a lot of pressure on people to teach for the test, prepare for the high stakes. And you know, teachers, principals, students, schools, what are they going to have to do? They're going to focus in an order, we can all do that, focus in an order and have a timeline of that. So making a high stakes test actually underlines the validity of the instrument, because the instrument was never designed for people to spend weeks or even months preparing for it. Then you don't have to measure it anymore. So it's a self-defeating approach. And this was written by, this was pointed out decades ago by a well-known researcher by the name of Campbell, and virtue of intervention became Campbell's Law. The more pressure, the higher stakes you put on one instrument, the less it measures what it's supposed to, and the more it corrupts the process. It's been shown over and over again. It's true with baseball, with O-runs, in the steroid era, because so much emphasis is placed on that, things began to cheat. And this has been going on for centuries.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Many, many particular questions.
You're welcome.
Lindsay Sobel?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I just hope people can be ready for any person we just get signed up. We also have Willard, who's not an actor, and then, like I said, a video.
Thank you to the committee. My name is Lindsay Sobel, and I'm the executive director of TeachPlus Massachusetts and the mother of two children in the Boston Public School. I'm testifying in opposition to H-340 because I support PAR and the use of assessment results to support students for all children. I work with amazing teachers all around the state, and I hear the same thing over and over again, which is that they want limited, high-quality assessments, and they want those assessments to match. I have seen urban teachers use the data from these good assessments to target exactly the skills on which their students are struggling. Because they have that data, they read that, they reteach to run all by practice, or they deep visit how to understand the author's purpose in the book. That is essential, especially for our most vulnerable students. Without that information, we're flying blind, without accountability, we lose momentum. A cult of testing argue that assessment is unfair to low-income students and students of color because their scores may be lower than those of their peers. In fact, because my deep commitment to civil rights and equality and making such a supporter of that and accountability, we need assessment to identify where their achievement gap before it is too late. Flank the test for inequality is like giving to the doctor her documents that she diagnoses. We need to prepare our students for the very real demands of today's economy. The test just shows us how much work there is to be done. I have watched Massachusetts teachers serving some of the highest needs students in the Commonwealth do amazing things with their students as they prepare for high-quality assessment. For example, Poplin Thai engaged her summer book kindergarten in a full-size castle building project. So here's what they did. They wrote letters to the, to the school secretary asking her to save boxes for them. They learned teamwork and engineering while rebuilding that castle. They analyzed the characters in various channels. That, if you want to call that test prep, that sounds like really, really great education to me. When we have high-quality assessments like the PAR assessment, teaching to the test is just great creative teaching. We cannot offer our children a moratorium on the very high expectations of life, especially for our highest needs students. We cannot wait. We need to measure our progress now and then just everything we know about it to offer an excellent application to every single child. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Kind of, for kindergarten students?
They were kindergarten students.
Yeah.
What, related to the PAR or M-CAS?
They weren't, but they were learning a common core standards in preparation for the fact that the students at that school were going to be taking those tests out. And there are exactly those kinds of examples in every other grade.
And in your experience, there's not a pattern before M-CAS, because in my experience, there's less castle building and creation of frame floors and glass floors, which had a lot more paper and pencil or computer preparators. So I really hope that you have enough past experience to know, I think young teachers don't know more than you might have, don't read. That's what the teaching room is for. And I also, I worry, I think that PAR is a super intense, because we've got no data, none about, it took twenty years to decide that M-CAS was the answer. But now we have a single year of validation. We are choosing, we are saying, we know the path of truth, equity, and creativity of others. I just want to say, we should be a little more educated. I'm quite agnostic. I'm not any good prediction about this, but to make a decision, I think you should ask yourself what you know about the outcome, which is not impactful.
I do have some data about PAR assessment itself that comes from a lot of teachers. This past fall, we put out an open call to teachers from across the state, and three hundred and fifty teachers spent a whole day digging into PAR assessment questions and giving feedback to the PAR committee to about the assessment. And of those three hundred and fifty teachers who were in seventy-four districts around the state, what we found was that seventy-two percent of them said that PAR was better than M-CAS, and six percent said M-CAS was better than PAR. So I think from those teachers, I have confidence that we are moving in a really good direction. We also asked them questions about the level of critical thinking measured by PAR, and the results were significantly very, very strong. Two-thirds of the teachers said that supposed to measure critical thinking still effectively, well, seven percent said they thought that it didn't. You give significant degree, the teachers may make PAR measure the important skills of college for a minute. So we did look into that question, and what we found was that teachers from all over the place who spent a whole day really digging in felt very strongly that it was measuring, that the assessment that was leading them to do the kind of thing were all trying to change.
Any other questions? I remember a very guy, our reporter, now Willard, who's a student, likes to represent him to the board.
Thank you for taking your board time. Dear Senate Education Union Chair, Channing, plus implicationary chair of the House, members of the committee on education. Before I start, I do want to identify myself with a disclaimer. Yes, I am, and I do personally sit on Massachusetts Board of Elementary and Secondary Education. Though, while I occupy this position alongside Secretary Kaiser, Commissioner Chesbry, and Chairman Sagan, who we've mentioned earlier, I do speak in this third moment for myself. Doesn't matter if you live in a neighborhood, I don't think I speak on behalf of the board, nor do I speak on behalf of any one organization in this state as they see, which I am the chairman of. Let me conclude. My testimony today will not be a bash on the part of the board. It will not be a slam in the NCLB, and it will not be even about getting through the test in general. be a slam in the N C L E, it will not be even about getting through a test in general. I'll leave that to us. I thank you very, very much today. What my testimony is trying to do is just outline factual information that you may refer back to your respective chambers. I hear the talk about strip tables on the table, a three-year warranty on high stakes attached to existing testing. Looking at two senior candidates, while PARC comes to vote on the board, if fails, the state can use another test and pursue alternative assessment to use this day testing. That's one. Scenario two is the one that looks more concerned, why I think that S two nine four and H three forty become extremely critical. If PARC comes to a vote at the board that says, while PARC has adopted, then our next take test, this would mean then that all students would either apply or take PARC except for grade ten. Ten's period, it would still be required to take MCAS through at least the class of twenty nineteen, and then they'll have to switch back to PARC for their own grade. That means we'll be administering PARC to these students, providing them with a primary evaluation along. If this sounds confusing or somewhat hideous, it is, and it's concerning. By influencing these respective bills, we know it's a standard necessary to use another test in the next grade, i.e. graduation required is gone, judged for these three years. Passing this bill would mean that PARC is out, that it can truly be a model. We don't want to be administering two tests at once. That's not fair, and it's not good for everyone. And the limitation of a single test would be welcomed to the schools because we won't have teachers trying to teach two standardized tests. Now, I'm not saying that PARC is better or MCAS is better, it's really not my thing, but this is what will happen if we don't adopt this more toward. I think Representative Paul Tucker said the best, that we just take a wrap, a wrap is what we need. And so, we don't want students stressing about having to take and passing tests in the grade and then PARC getting to the bottom of the grade after our requiring one year's of PARC in the adult. We'll save the state money by doing this, and this is a lot of, not too many parts, but just taking a step down, taking a minute to accept that we may have gone a little too far, and we want to just take this one test at a time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from Mr. Willard? Steve Young, thank you very much for your testimony. All right. We now acknowledge our guys, Tim McDermott, Paul, Bill McDermott, Louie, Jason Williams, Ben, and those from the panel, including Jim, David, and Neil, et cetera.
Hello, thanks for having me. My name is James McDermott. I'm a teacher, thirty-four years in this public school system. I'm also a Massachusetts State Teacher of the Year. I taught in the Admiss schools in Worcester, one of the schools was the University Park Campus School, and I was there. That school was cited as the only school in the state successful with urban children. I helped create the Massachusetts Frank Parks, and I helped create the MCAS test. In fact, I taught Massachusetts teachers and the folks at the testing company in Texas how to score the MCAS essay. I was a college professor in the